Twenty twenty three.
Okay, let me start this over. Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Marineric. June twelfth, twenty twenty three. Regular board meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. No, it was the same reason.
Yep.
Hi. My pleasure. I am saying. To the. One nation. Under that. It is. Thanks.
Now, I did a motion once a meeting. Second. Before I open, open a meeting, we were in executive session. And we finished, and I want to close executive session. I make the motion to close executive session.
Second.
Well, favor. Okay, now the motion to open a meeting. All in favor? Hi. Okay.
Now, it's the action that was taken. The executive session.
Okay, in, in executive session, the Village of Marineric Board of Trustees voted unanimously to take an appeal from the recent litigation that Hampshire has brought against the village, Hampshire LLC versus the Village of Marineric. Thank you. Okay, there were fire exits on my right and on my left. If you have a cell phone, please put it on mute. Thank you. The first item on my agenda is police officers awards presentation, and tonight we are blessed to have a police chief here. Chief, it's up to you.
So, on May second, myself, Officer Anthony Frioli and Sergeant Andrew Banquet attended an award ceremony in Albany, New York for the New York State's DWI and MUDS against drug driving award ceremony. During that ceremony, the department received one award and each of the officers attended received an award. Unfortunately, Happy Frioli could not be here, but he did receive a recognition of excellence award. There were only twenty nine awards given out in that category, and that's for every city, village, and town in state. So Anthony Frioli encountered fourteen percent of the DWI and DWAI arrests throughout last year by our department. He is also one of our newest field training officers for the department. Sergeant Banquet was also in attendance, and he received the recognition of excellence DRE enforcement. So that's drug recognition expert enforcement. There are only fourteen awards given out for all of New York State. Sergeant Banquet was one of the recipients of those awards. Sergeant Banquet was a top individual DWI, DWAI enforcer for our village with twenty percent of all DWI, DWI and DWI arrests. He continues to be proactive in enforcement. He has become a supervisor of the department. And the Village of Marineric itself received an award. I'm sorry, Sergeant Banquet, this is the fourth time he receives. Fifth time, I think, for some. And for the department, this is the fourth year that we've received an award of recognition for Department of the Year. There are only thirteen departments that were recognized throughout New York State. Our department itself had thirty five DWI, DWI arrests during the calendar year, and that was up almost ten percent from the previous year. So we are doing our due diligence, keeping out there and trying to protect the community and keeping our motors and our pedestrians safe. So that, those were the awards that were presented that evening. Unfortunately, no police work duty calls, so Officer Kalasako and his new canine partner Ike, who is still coming, are on a call right now, so they are not able to attend. But as you know, about two months ago, we received a donation from Southeastern Guide Dogs, which was a donation. She is a massive important tribute. They graduated from school May twenty sixth, and since that time, they've already made two, so two drug arrests since that time.
They're going to rest, too, right?
Yes, yes, which one of the arrests also led to a gun, a must. So they're out on the road, you'll be seeing them around, and in August, they're attending another two weeks of training, having to do the court searchings and things of that nature. So maybe it will be a formal introduction.
Oh, yeah, happy to have him.
Sure thing.
Like me, Ike. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Officer Banquet, Sergeant Banquet. It'll hold the department. Thank you very much for an outstanding job, Chief. Keep up the good work. Now, we have a presentation by the ever pop, what? Oh, wait, whoa, look, speak it, speak it devil.
Hi.
Like the dog, too.
Yes, this is Ike, this is my partner. We just got done with six weeks of narcotics school. I'm.
Still sniffing.
She's sniffing. Obviously, I'm sure you guys saw she pulled a gun. We said the other week, last week, we got a gun together. Just about an hour ago, hit on some crack cocaine for one of my partners. So it's been a good couple of weeks for her.
Let's keep it busy.
Just go back to school for another portion.
It's great. Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
Take care, Ike.
Miss Mike at the opening of the office.
Is it it?
Geez.
Yeah, that's true, right? Oh, that was a interesting prelude. The next up is our friends at the Harbor Island Conservancy have a project they want to present to us. Who's doing a presentation? June? Hello, June. Anybody else want to accompany her?
You brought their buyers.
Thank you. Hi. Do not enter and join me as one of our board members and squad. See you. Um. Thank you very much for allowing us to make a presentation to the board. We're ready for approval tonight for a project that Harbor Island Conservancy would like to give to the village. Some of you may not be familiar with Harbor Island Conservancy. We were incorporated as a nonprofit, Flower One C Three, in two thousand and three. So we've been hanging around for a while, and we've worked closely with or with Kathy Desmond, who was trying to make sure that the beach was swimmable again back in two thousand and three, working with the sewage problems in the village. Our mission is, I'm just gonna read it because I'm not very good at talking about this. Harbor Island Conservancy's goal is to maintain Harbor Island Park as an enjoyable destination for walking, playing, swimming, and fishing. We work in coordination with the village government and other organizations to care for the park, providing knowledge, ideas, energy, and funding for beautification. The project tonight, I submitted some information to you guys. I hope you got it. And it is a ADA compliant sitting garden area at the corner of Oriente and Boston Post Road entrance along that big rock wall. And Harbor Island Conservancy will be responsible for the cost, just as we did with many of the other projects. We did the signage on that wall. We've done the gazebo. We donated to the village. We did the large playground near the tennis courts and the ball fields. Oh goodness, I can't, several of our board are here. Do you have any other projects?
The entrance.
Oh, the gardens at the entrance, what we used to call the Black Pole area that's nearby construction. But we did that, that garden, which actually did up on the front of a calendar several years ago. We also did the plantings as you enter the park. One of the ideas was if we get the park swimmable again and people start coming down to swim, it has to look good or they don't want to be there. And so we kind of, once the sewage treatment was corrected and the water cleared up and people started coming for swimming, we decided, you know, let's make this part beautiful. But one of the things that we feel the park is could use is an area that's more ADA compliant. And the area that we're talking about in the park that we'd like to place this sitting garden area is very accessible to people of all needs and ages because there are several curb cuts and sidewalks leading into that area from both Oriente Avenue as well as Boston Post Road. And so we feel that it would be very accessible for people even in wheelchairs to be able to sit. And it's actually one of the best views looking out across the harbor out to Long Island Sound. And well, board, can you think of anything else I need to say? Tonight, we're asking your permission to or your approval to do this part for the village.
On our agenda tonight at this meeting is a resolution to put it on our work session, and it'll be on our work session in two weeks, so we could have a deeper discussion and review of it.
I was hoping that we could do that tonight because we would really like to get this going if we could get started. I have been speaking with engineers and architects, and they could get this part possibly finished by the end of July.
I, I, I think, you know, it's a big move, and I think it's a good move, but I think we, we, we do have to do our due diligence. And I understand you're, you're wanting to get it done, and we want to get it done, too, but we want to do it so that, you know, the public has input and people know what's going on, and we, 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 we check with, you know, all the interested parties and make sure it's going to work. And but I think you're on the right path.
We also have been speaking with the Parks Manager, Jels, who is very much in favor of this. He feels that it's an underused section of the park that would be greatly enhanced. That was what he told me to tell you tonight. And also Jason said that he too felt that it would be a nice area for all ages to use this. We also talked to At Home on the Sound, who also thought it would be a great idea to provide better usage for people of all ages. And the Arts Council has also been looking at this area with us because they thought that it might be a good place to put a memorial for the first responders, but that's still something that they're battling around. A nice piece of art even would be great. So I think we're getting a lot of and positive input from village organizations.
Yes, and I think, you know, we, we could put it on the work session and hopefully in two weeks, move it that night to the regular meeting. So we could have a decision in two weeks.
Yeah, we, we, we would need that one session at least to go over the details of it, but if, if it all looks good, we, we can, we can.
Move it, move it that night to the regular.
Um, one of the things, like I say, is we've been exploring more of the part detail. What I submitted to you is just a very preliminary drawing, and so I am working, they're not going to, obviously, we don't want to pay for an engineering skilled drawing until we get approval from the village, but we have gotten a lot of suggestions, and so I'll try to provide you with a little more detail about what's actually going to be there because the drawing that I submitted did have some information that I thought, like it said, it was a wooden bench. No, we would use a green metal bench that would reflect what is already in the park. So there's just a few little, and then we want to actually extend the width of some of the entry. So it's a little, we don't want ninety degree turns for a wheelchair going into a park. So there's that, the engineer told me it's called a flare when you make that curve to the sidewalk. So there are a few little changes that we've done already from suggestions we've received that I think would enhance the drawing that I submitted earlier.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Harbor Island Conservancy. Thank you for all your dedication, hard work over the years, your, your support and your encouragement of the park. It's, it's, it's made a big difference. Thank you. The next up is public comment period. The limit on, yeah, the limit on public comment is three minutes. This for everybody. So please bear that in mind.
Did you do to myself going to that three minutes?
No.
Thank you. Please give us a bit of the area. Married forty five years, three kids, graduated three out of their education, got PhDs and a master's and a thesis. I guess. I know what it takes to get the community educated. What saved my life was becoming a philosopher and a student of community organizing. Took graduate degrees and a lot of doctoral courses and was organized. And I believe that it saved my life. I'm an individual, grew up in Harlem, lived there over twenty five years. And without how I may look or nineteen forty five, and with my mother, I couldn't enter Woolworths because you were dark. And my grandfather was black. I saw the buildings in Harlem burned. I was there with, with the Black Panthers, young lords. I've got a history in spite of how I look because of my age. I'm here because I've learned a lot of things in organizing for the top scholar in the world. And among them, making sure those that make, those that write the definition control the results. And if you don't have access to a service, that service does not exist. And when it comes to this village, the definition by the board and the subcommittees have never really, the important decisions never even reach the entire public. And this second started with awards over eight months ago, and both people now are going to have lots of the benefit of the Police Department. And that really, that lawsuit ended no winners in a way, but that could be has to be thought about differently, but I would hope to receive an award over eight months ago for my service in the, as a crossing guard and a park ranger, because as a social worker, I also work for the community. That has not happened yet. So that contract has not been consummated and hasn't been finalized. I have an egg house, pay a lot of taxes. And when you don't have information, it's hard to organize. So that's why we have people like me that get the information out. The website does still not, does still does not have the lawsuits documented that had to occur, especially related to the Hamster Club. All right, if access to what the, what's really behind the app, the Hamster Club got out, we would know that the revenue that we can get from the taxes and the fifty five million dollars that have gone into lawsuits and beyond that is causing us, causing me to get acreages in taxes. Are you happy to follow?
Please finish up.
Our taxes.
Jerry?
That's me.
Yeah. Stop, please.
Our taxes are always high.
Okay. Mr. Quill, please finish up.
This is, our taxes are invisible fence as to why I couldn't get into Woolworths. It's creating a divide in classes. We need those tax monies, and we got to stop paying for lawsuits that shouldn't be if we had access to the information that should be had.
Thank you very much. I give you comments. Thank you. Sir, thank you. Please allow. Please, please, okay, please allow the next person to take. Luis, come on.
Back to mine. I'm a person, all right?
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not a product. I want to put forward it to be another.
Please, y'all from the audience.
Hi, I'm Hillary Short. I live at one fifty one Fenimore. Two and a half weeks ago, nine fifteen in the morning session, Silas were crossing Boston Post Road at Fenimore. As they cut the lights cross, a car did a left turn from Fenimore and hit them both. Silas had surgery on his foot and is still unable to walk. Speaking to many neighbors and local residents is possible, and one at Delancey are both major problems pedestrians. I'm happy to see you have a resolution on tonight's meeting about the lights, and I notice on the traffic committees are going to be tomorrow evening. I want to say a huge thank you to the police, the village police, farm men, and ambulance workers and local residents for their prompt response, and also to the police for their bug to rain in that they bought, brought over to Silas's house with a lovely signed card by many of our police. He is so pleased with this and all the stuff he's received from the emergency workers that day. Thank you to Mayor Murphy for sending Sasha flowers and to Leilani for visiting with the family. These small things matter in our community. I also thanked both our state senator and state assemblyman for a quick response to my email and their concern about being proactive about this issue. I look forward to reporting back to Sasha and her family, the measures that are going to be taken to keep residents stable and this happening, you mean? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that is on the agenda for tonight.
Hi, good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to comment on the village's updated agreements. My name is Jennifer Jacobs. Does this is the right time?
Yes, yes, it is.
You can comment longer during the comp plan portion. You're not limited to three minutes, just tip.
Did you comment on the complan?
Yeah.
Yeah, wait, wait to the complan here. You get, yeah. Thank you, Jen.
Robert Stark, seven oh four Palmer Court, I'm on the back admission. And I'm here to speak for the Traffic Commission, but I have a question about traffic issues. On your work agenda, there were five issues for recommendations through the Traffic Commission. I was here earlier, had to leave, went home, what period? I didn't. So can somebody tell me where these issues addressed? There were.
They're going to be on the meeting in two weeks. We moved them to the, to the regular meeting in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go out of order this one time because the village manager's report is usually at the end, and the village manager tonight is going to give us a little update on flooding. And I would rather he do it when there's folks in the room to hear about it, because usually not because he's not a good speaker or he's not interesting, but usually the room is empty by the time the village manager gives his report. So Jerry, can you give us your report tonight early?
So this is, this is my parallel flood mitigation. The last one I did was early May. On May twelfth, our consultant for the permitting for the dredging sent preliminary plans to the Throughway Authority for their environment list to review. The permit application was also sent to JT Cleary, our dredging contractor, to sign and attach their insurance information. Once the Throughway Authority gives feedback to our consultant, they can address any comments to prepare for the full application to obtain their permission to dredge in their right of way. I do want to tell you that ongoing meetings have occurred on a weekly basis between our village engineer, our consultant JT Cleary and our, I'm sorry, our contractor JT Cleary and our consultant G E I to coordinate mobilization strategies for the summer dredging. That's what they're talking about now, moving equipment into the village. On May seventh, the final permit applications to the D E C, the D O S, and the Army Corps for the River Maintenance Projects were submitted, which include Westchester County approvals for the lot on Grove Street and receipt of the signed consultant forms will be submitted with the applications to the agencies. So the full application has been submitted. It's extensive. It's hundreds of pages, and it costs thousands and thousands of dollars. But what we've been promised by the Army Corps and the D E C, not necessarily the D O S, is that they will have a ten day to two week turnaround time. So we're already in week one.
So hopefully by the end of this month, we'll be dredging.
And the contractor is talking about mobilization because we're bringing in the equipment. We're not waiting after they get the approval. We'll bring it in the equipment now.
Good news.
Staff dressing efforts since April third, the DPW has been dredging and clearing in the following areas. The team has been back working since early April. We've had several trees over the winter come down or come down in our rivers and lodge themselves as obstructions. We've also had some buildup at the choke points due to the heavy rainfall that we received in April and May. Some of the areas that we've worked on is the Warren Avenue Park at the ninety five, I ninety five overpass, the dead end of Bradley, and the Barry Avenue extension near EMS. That's on the Marineric Riverside. On the Sheldrick Riverside, we've been dredging and clearing along.
Your thumbs up.
It was over.
Now, long, finish it up.
Oh, it's long.
Go ahead.
Okay, along DPW's, on the Sheldrick Riverside, along DPW Salt Shed, we've been clearing and dredging Fenimore Road Bridge and the river bend at Plaza near Bud Walker Park. So we're currently focused on going back into some of the bridge abutments that we've been clearing out early last year. I'm sorry, earlier this year, and we're working on trying to keep them clear. From June twenty fifth to August thirty first of this year, we'll be working on the Ralph Avenue and Gertrude Avenue drainage improvements. The existing stormwater infrastructure collects water from the culvert that runs along I ninety five, which is a tributary of the Marineric River. Two thirty inch corrugated metal pipes began approximately seventy five feet from the north curb of Ralph and Gertrude and continue underground until they merge with the drainage chamber at the intersection of Ralph and Elliott. During Hurricane Ida, that section was severely damaged and is no longer capable of managing the surface and stream tributary waters. In fact, that area now on a two inch, three inch rainstorm gets flooded very, very quickly. We will replace the two damaged corrugated metal culverts from Ralph and Gertrude to Ralph and Elliott. We'll be installing new sidewalks, new curbs. And we're doing roadway surface from Ralph Avenue all the way to New Street. Starting in September twenty twenty three and ending construction in spring of twenty twenty four, we will be working on the Jefferson Avenue Wood Street Drainage Realignment Improvements. We have completed eight borings from the end of Jefferson Avenue down to the intersection of Wood and Grove and received geotechnical data last week. Our surveyors completed the survey for the area. Our consulting engineer has mapped the tributary area and is currently working on hydraulic 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 hydrology study, sorry, analysis of the stream storm system. All the stormwater will drain into the existing thirty inch reinforced concrete pipe by the Marineric River. So our consultant, our consulting engineer will evaluate the maximum capacity of the storm line and make recommendations for the appropriate return event for that proposed improvements. The major part of this project is to upgrade the existing storm drain pipes from wood to Jefferson, I'm sorry, from Jefferson to wood, eliminating the connection of the open channel behind Harold and Wood Street properties to establish a connection of storm drain on Wood Street. The open channel will be left in place, which will only receive stormwater runoff from the homes in the immediate area, thereby reducing significantly the amount of water that it currently handles. July twenty twenty three, the Army Corps of Engineers expected to come here and present the final plans for the demolition and reconstruction of the Wood Avenue Bridge, which is going to go from the current forty five foot opening to an eighty five foot opening and adding additional depth. Demolition will start in December twenty twenty three and reconstruction is scheduled to start. I'm sorry, demolition will end in December twenty twenty three, and reconstruction will start in early spring of twenty twenty four. Finally, there are two large parcels of property that are for Finally, there are two large parcels of property that are for sale in the Washingtonville neighborhood. One is a .43 acre and the other is .3 acres. Total for those two properties is $2.6 million. The return on investment from the purchase of those two properties and installing pervious asphalt paving and creating a passenger car parking lot as well as a commercial parking lot would be 10.75 years. So in order for us to consider that, we would need B O T's approval to ask for appraisals to pursue those two properties. We anticipate $200,000 a year in income from the parking permits that we would sell. That's why it would take us 10.75, almost 11 years. And that's it.
Do you have an estimate of how much debris you could use for the rivers?
I don't have that in my report, but I could get you that.
Yeah. It's
Truckloads, 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 not three truckloads, like 30, 40, 50 truckloads. Yeah, a lot, a lot of stuff.
Jerry, thank you very much. We just want to reassure the public that we are just not sitting on our hands and waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers to come and fix everything. We are doing what we can, when we can, and how we can. And that is a big change from how the village is operated for a long time. And we will keep building upon those successes. I really appreciate the hard work it took to get the Army Corps and the state to give us a dredging permit. And I know that we went back and forth with them a lot, but we're gonna have a 10-year one now, right?
Right. Can we also say that we got the permit through the assistance of Shelley Mayer and Steve Otis, who helped us get the studies funded so that we could comply with the requirements that the D E C needed before we can dredge. So we should thank them. Yeah, as well.
Thank you, Jerry. The next up is public hearings, and the first public hearing is on P L L I 2023 to amend the village code to include fair and affordable housing for all zones in the village. This has been closed and sent to the county planning. All backup is from the 2423 agenda. So I need a motion to open this public hearing. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna get it right here. So this is to provide a bonus for building all affordable or 50% affordable in the village of the Mariner. I think it's a good idea. You know, we'd like to see every building that goes up from now on be all affordable because we've had more than our share of for-profit development over the years, and we need to catch up on the other end. But Nora, would you like to talk about this? I know it's your idea.
Yeah, you know, we had, we were not one of the communities that had to adopt the model ordinance because we have had a fair number of affordable housing units in our village. Not enough, but we were, we were a community that had done more than some of the other communities in Westchester. And so we have not adopt, we had not yet adopted the model ordinance. And the model ordinance basically requires communities to make a commitment to affordable housing and with, and not, not necessarily projects that are done by affordable housing organizations and developers, but requiring it in every for-profit development. So we had made a little bit of a start when we did the moratorium law and we required it in some of the commercial districts. And now we're requiring it in all of the large multifamily districts. So I think it's a step in the right direction. It's not the end of the path, but it's a step.
Right. It doesn't actually build any housing right now, but it hopefully will encourage developers to be more aware that that's something that we want to see when they come in and do it.
And they have to. They have to. They have to.
It'll take that into their calculus. Anybody from the community? Jen?
Good evening, transees. Thank you for the opportunity to make comment on your draft comprehensive plan. My name is Jennifer Jacobs. I'm a resident in the village. I reside at 634 Palmer Ave, the corner with Saint Street. I'm before you tonight as a member of the Mariner Coalition for Affordable Housing, as well as the Washingtonville Housing Alliance. Washingtonville Housing Alliance is a 42-plus-year organization in the village, nonprofit, with 40 units of permanently affordable housing. We rarely have vacancies in our portfolio and were asked on a daily basis for housing referrals for members of the community seeking affordable housing options. The Mariner Coalition for Affordable Housing was organized three years ago when Washingtonville Housing Alliance came together with the Community Resource Center and Cure Communities Understanding Racism Through Education to discuss the urgent housing needs in our community. Our coalition has since grown to include faith-based institutions in the Mariner, including St. Thomas Church and the Westchester Jewish Center, as well as participation from planning, business, and social experts. We have three key goals, the first being to preserve existing affordable housing in the community while protecting tenants' rights. The second is to expand affordable options in the Mariner, particularly for rents currently unmet in the market, focusing on those at 60% and below the area median. And third, to promote education dialogues around affordable housing while adopting an equity lens in our world. We are very happy to see the community's affordable housing needs highlighted more prominently in the updated comprehensive plan, and we applaud the urge on recent steps to actualize some of the planning by committing up to affordable housing uses on the deteriorating parking structure across the street. Whenever underutilized or decaying public sites can be used to bring housing for a community, it is a win for everyone with an expanded tax base and more options for housing with a variety of incomes. In light of our three core goals, I would like to highlight just a few key recommendations that we believe are critical to focus on with your updated comprehensive plan. Under our goal of preserving existing affordable housing, the comp plan references the rapid loss of affordable units and cites the enormous percentage of Mariner renters for being more than half of their household income unrented. But it doesn't identify examples of policies or incentives that would preserve our existing affordable housing stock. We would really encourage sort of a relook at the comprehensive plan to maybe identify some concrete commitments or examples of how we could preserve existing affordable housing in the village. This might be through tax incentives or promoting existing government programs such as the landlord-tenant assistance program, which is run by the Westchester County, where eligible landlords and owners might receive up to $25,000 per rental unit that qualifies for needed repairs under the program in exchange for maintaining rent increases at certain levels. The second set of recommendations is around our goal of expanding affordable housing options. In addition to supporting the model ordinance, which is a great idea, we would encourage the village to strengthen our comp plan by explicitly defining affordability in rental housing as housing that's restricted for at least three years at or below 60% of the area median income. This is possible and common from a financing perspective and can help ensure resources are focused on the gaps in our housing stock. In addition, we would like the village to commit to identifying more public sites for affordable housing uses. Lastly, we have offered prior comment on the plan's inclusion of several areas of the plan that may make it more difficult for affordable housing development in future by proposing reduced density worth for the addition of duplicative requirements or restrictions, such as the prohibition of any construction within 50 feet of a water body emptying its long-term sound or its tributaries. Previously, this was subject to a planning board permit and a path which once again exists that would allow for thoughtful, ecologically sound proposals. This example and others that reduce the potential for development should be reexamined with our communities' critical affordable housing needs in mind. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay. I think that this is, you know, we're gonna have another hearing directly after this about the comprehensive plan. But this is, I think, a good step in the path toward making this community more affordable. Anybody like to close the public hearing?
I will move to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor? Now I need a motion to adopt the new law. Second. Sally, please call. What? Go ahead.
The resolution that you have is actually referring it for advisory consistency. Because that hasn't been done yet.
Oh, that's right. I thought that was the complan. Is this too?
It's both. Yeah, this, this was.
Okay.
Yeah, I flagged that it hadn't actually gone yet.
I thought it was just for the complan.
Yeah, it's also enlisted, so it is subject to that.
Okay, so please scratch that motion.
Well, yeah.
No, we're not gonna close the public.
And I prepared a C A M for you.
That's right. All right. So we need a motion to refer this to the H C C M C. Second. All in favor? We need a motion to adjourn this hearing. Let's adjourn it to the first meeting in July because that would give H C C M C, because we've been doing two weeks H C C.
For a week, so they would have time for this. Yeah, they get it. Well, they have to.
Let's, let's. I'm fine with doing it.
Get it to them so that they can get it.
Yeah.
Greg, you can get it to them quickly.
Yeah, it'll be on the same timeline as the comprehensive plan. We've actually made spots on their agenda for these items, anticipating that they're.
And when's the meeting?
Next week.
It's next week. I'm fine for doing it in two weeks, but I don't know if they'll have it back yet. But we could just, you know, adjourn it again.
Adjourn it for two weeks.
Adjourn it for two weeks.
And we'll make it, if we don't have it back by like the Thursday before the meeting, we have a note on the agenda that it will be adjourned.
No, we will have to open a meeting and adjourn it again.
But I, I don't want to have everybody come for nothing. That's all.
Well, we could put, I could see you talk about noticing the public. Yeah, right. But we have to actually, if we adjourn it, we have to actually. All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn this hearing until the 26th of June. Second. All in favor? Okay. The next is, I need to open public hearing on comprehensive plan update and referrals to H C C M C. Okay, I need to open a public hearing. Second. All in favor? Okay, so just so you know, at the beginning, this, this is gonna be open. And I don't think we should close this until July. No, I think we should give people time to, you know, digest it and we should, you know, take their input and see what we want to change. It doesn't have to be renoticed if we change it. Is that right, Bob? Correct. So it's not like it's a law that has to be renoticed all over again. Okay. So Greg, why don't you give us, Mr. Cutler, why don't you give us a little introduction to comprehensive plan? Oh, we have Neil here, right? I'm sorry, Neil, I didn't see you back there.
All right. That was not exactly. Thank you. My name is Neil Desai. I'm a planner at H and H, formerly known as Parton's Dean Hanover. I, it's, I've been working with the village now for six years and I'm happy to see this getting close to the public hearing and the final. Actually, I don't control the slides, right? So I need to give Jerry, Jerry, the next slide, please. Thank you. So we've been at this since about 2017, actually. There's been a number of drafts of the plan that produced from 2019 being the first one, and then we all know what happened after 2020. There's also the more current study as well. Eight months or so from the comprehensive plan, but also informed the comprehensive plan as well. And we resumed. So this is actually the sixth, the sixth draft of the, of the comprehensive plan. So it's been through a lot of gears. And the next slide, please. I just want to touch upon the community engagement that went on in the first phase prior to COVID, which there was a lot of community engagement. There still is the website, planvom.org. There was a sustainable sustainability survey that helped inform the sustainability section. Now, I want to say that the, there was a different board at the time as well. Some of the board are still here, but there was a different board and the priorities for the plan initially in 2017 were residential neighborhood character and sustainability with resilience as well. So, and so that's reflected in the current draft. We did a lot of work under residential neighborhoods, which is chapter 4C in this comprehensive plan. And so, you know, we retained a lot of that work. We didn't, but it's all a matter of, you know, what the priorities are in the end. And so I'll talk about how, how the priorities are allocated. But we had diverse workshops. We participated in numbers, number festivals. We had a, that was a very busy year getting to know the village and the people of the village, and it was really great. Now, if you can go to the next slide, please, Jerry. Now, in terms of like the timeline, we had to move now from where we left off to where we are today. We thought that the, a good way to really get tabs on, on the community was to do a community survey in 2022. And that was very key in terms of, I was both done in English and Spanish, and it was very key in terms of helping to get a sense of the priorities and how they may have shifted. And so, and if you go to the next slide, there's a couple of things. There's, there's actually some handouts outside which you may or may not have taken, but this is the pretty important page of the complan. It's a, it's a 150-some-odd-page document, so I didn't make copies of that. But this is really key, which is the statement of goals and objectives, essentially the priority topics. And that's part of the plan. And then there's something called the index of recommendations, and that's also there. This is, so instead of having to sift through the document, this is a handy index of all the recommendations. For now, it's an index recommendations for you all, but also it's intended to be an editable Word document for the village to utilize as a way to begin to allocate different levels of priority to each of the strategies within the plan. And so this is really a tool. This is just one, one representation of it that we have here, but it'll actually live as a Word document that will be useful for the village to begin to, begin to look at, you know, how much funding you know, what partners do we need to work for, what, how much operating budget will this take? So just a kind of planning tool for, for the village. Excellent. And then you also, one other, the third part of what, of what you might have seen both from the news as well as on the the project website is the comment response table. So this is the official comment period after the publication of the, of the March, I think it's the March 1st, 2023 draft. And so everybody's comments have been, have been put into this table for everyone to see, as well as our responses to the comments. And, and then you, if there's, some of them, we appreciate everybody's comments. Some of them were errors people fixed, people suggested fixing things that were missing. They had substantive comments about different suggestions about housing. If they ran, they ranged, they ranged from, you know, A to Z. So I really appreciate the comments that people submitted. And, you know, we took time to really read all the comments and, and identify if there's, you know, something that needed to change in the plan or a new recommendation to be added or something to be corrected. So appreciate that. Next slide, please. So this is essentially what I was handing out. This is, these are the key. This is like the key, the key page of the plan. And it's the village priorities. And you could see in shorthand, flood mitigation, resilience is the top, top priority. And that certainly came out loud and clear during the survey. Safe streets for walking and biking, affordable housing, environmentally sustainable, updating and modernizing zoning code and supporting business and economic development. I'm just gonna go through each of, if you can go to the next slide, please, Jerry. Just a brief, brief bit on each of these topic areas. We, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers Plan Fund Management Project is a foundational project, but we know that there's much, much more to do. And so this section is really one. And so this section is really one that changed the most since the previous versions of the plan in twenty twenty. In, in cooperation with the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee. The recommendations are organized to, by, by type of, of, of activity outreach engagement to further studies and plans, policies and regulatory actions during flooding, stormwater. Technology backup protection, early warning systems, land acquisition and infrastructure investments, whether it's for a seawall. So this is a kind of a more, much more thicker and deeper section than it was in the previous twenty twenty. So this is just a general, general framework of, of how that chapter is organized, the recommendations. Next slide, please. Safe streets for walking and biking. I think one of the, I worked with a lot of the committees. The Traffic Commission had the idea, so give them credit for organizing Open Streets Day. So there's a couple of things, you know, I think, you know, people recognize Marinerak as a walkable place. But I think there's still a lot of work to make it become actually pedestrian, safe for pedestrians and, and safer pedestrians to actually walk through the streets. So I think, you know, organizing Open Streets Day is, is a nice concept to just build, build recognition of, of the importance of walking and being able to bike in the village, close off the street. And that was just a nice recommendation that the traffic commissioner suggested to highlight. Beyond that also is just the actual infrastructure of the village. Preparing a village-wide plan for bicycle facilities and amenities, as well as for preparing a, a village-wide plan for walkability and pedestrian safety. And I think one of the challenges of, of my work as a consultant on this was that a lot, a lot of things have been, you know, before ink is dried, I find out that Marinerak has, has already started, you know, moving forward on a lot of initiatives. So you'll see that, you know, while the Traffic Commission has done in, in the plan, you'll see that, you know, where possible, we recognize what, what has been done already, as well as looking ahead to what needs to be done. Next slide, please. Affordable housing, I think we, again, these are some of the recommendations where, you know, the village has already put forward on. Four A fifteen is every recommendation is given a number, and that four A means chapter four A fifteen. Requiring affordable housing units to be constructed within new multi-universal developments, which is what was previous per, such a previous public hearing. Another, there's a, a number of recommendations listed under four eight S fifteen that support the broader concept for developing, developing affordable housing. Expanding the C two zoning district up to the, what I, what was done was up to the under parking deck. So that means essentially using village property for affordable house development. Sense. And for a eighteen, I think this is really important. You know, there's, there's a development side to this, but there's also a tenant side to this, protecting of I, you know, how do we retain affordable housing and how do we, or how can tenants be protected? And so, you know, there is a recommendation. The village is already for, even before this put in the document was to have an affordable housing committee structured to, to, to help with a, a number of the programs, it's a number of the programs that could be implemented. Working with some of the partners, such as the Coalition for Affordable Housing, C R C and, and other groups to look not only at, at development of affordable housing, but also retention and protecting tenants and helping them stay and put in their existing homes. Next slide. This was one of, this is a very thick section because it was one of the priorities emerged from the very beginning of the plan. But it organizes, really what this chapter does, it's organized in terms of topic. So there's clean water, clean air, and all of that's based on a, a, a survey we had done in two thousand nineteen. And so the, the, the order, the sequence of the things of the, of the items is based on what was most important to people in the survey. So clean water being number one, clean air number two, zero waste number three, and so on. And so this, there's, there's so many different strategies within this very thick section. But it complements the village's participation in climate smart communities and clean energy communities. Again, the community environment and the climate smart previous task force again has, you know, before they dried, they've, they've, they've already adopted a lot of things. So part of the work of updating the conference of plan from the previous version, not, not the twelve version, but the, the drafts from twenty twenty before COVID were just making sure we identify what things have already been accomplished and, and, and by the committee and what, what still needs to be done. Next slide. So zoning figures heavily in this, in terms of comprehensive zoning update. And to update, modernize, improve the zoning code. So there's several aspects of this, which is just the legibility of the code, the structure, removing obstacles. And so those details, you know, they're, they're, that, that's the, the main recommendation. So it's to update, modernize the code. And there's a number of, of suggestions provided, working with the planning board and planner that are included in, in the comp plan of things that need to be looked at. There, there's a number of recommendations pertaining to zoning and subdivision recommendations in residential neighborhoods, which I mentioned, chapter four C residential neighborhoods, which was a, one of the priorities. So we've maintained that, that section largely with some updates. And then another recommendation, I think, for especially dwelling units was something that was in the prior, prior draft of this plan. And as, as a supplement to the affordable housing strategies, exploring permitting essentially dwelling units. Next slide. And the, the, the last priority, and I think that will open it up, is business and economic development. The, the map on the right. What we had done is we identified in the, in the plan, we go into, we, what we identified was called character districts. And this came from thinking, this came from thinking that was developed during the Moore farm study. How can we break up all these corridors into pieces that make sense? And so the pieces that make sense, meaning looking at them not just as commercial, not just by use, but in terms of use and form. And, and when you look at that way, you realize that, you know, while Halsted Avenue is a commercial corridor, it is, it is, it is C one zone, C one. But it has very different characteristics from this, the C one that is own property that you might see on, on East Post Road and West Post Street. So that's just a kind of a way to look at the different corridors and developing revitalization strategies for each of these parent districts, these pieces of borders. And, and some of them also are districts, like the Maker Zone is a very identified, identified in the file, the district, the industrial area. And, and again, collaborating with, with the Chamber of Commerce business owners and the necessary So that's, that's the brief recap overview of both, of the priority areas. There's, there's a lot in the plan. There's the index here you can pick up out there if you haven't, and the, the main priority sheet. And if there's anything else Greg that you wanted to add, or that's.
Thanks. I think, I think you covered, you know, really the, the main points about this, you know, at this point in the process, we're opening a public hearing. We presented, Neil and I presented before the Westchester County Planning Board has to go to Harper Coastal for advisory consistency. We prepared the documents to, to send them, so that's, that's where we're in the process. You want to hear those public?
When do we hear back from the Westchester County Planning Board?
Um, we, we should hear soon. They did not give me any specific deadlines, but we presented to them last Tuesday. And so it's been, it'll be weeks tomorrow. And so we should, we should hear back within this week or next week.
Okay. Okay, thank you. A little bit from the public like to ask a question or address the board. It's on a comprehensive plan. Guadnold.
Charles Guadnold, just wanted to note, I'm not here in my capacity to the Budget Committee. Wanted to thank interview for their incredible amount of work and stuff. A fairly massive effort, it's really appreciated. I'll be quick. My comment number twelve basically looks at neighborhoods that are from these own single family neighborhoods, but that are largely comprised of two family homes. And the idea is to consider updating the zoning map to revise these areas to be two family homes. I attached a map with some sample areas. And you can see that the lots that are in orange are the two family homes that basically blanket the single family districts. And it hits home on two of the priorities that were outlined, one being affordable housing and then the other being zoning map. So the zoning map update would be obvious, but then with respect to the affordable housing, what this can accomplish is particularly in the perspective of middle income housing stock that you'll take large numbers of single family homes that can then be converted into legal two families and then make those affordable and available. So it's pretty, it's pretty simple. It's, it's low hanging fruit. I work for a big multifamily developer that does projects like the Mason. And as you guys know, it takes years often to go through the entitlement process. And if you take a hundred and fifty unit development, that's ten percent of affordable housing, that would be fifteen units. Whereas you can look at some of these neighborhoods and streets that you would have access to more than fifteen per street. Times excellent number of streets and areas throughout the community. So I think it would make sense. I really appreciate the formal response that this is going to be looked at with additional study. And then hopefully that can translate into either the board or the planning board making recommendations to update the, the zoning map. Basically, thank you.
Thank you very much. No, if, if you can ask, please come to the mic.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So thank you, everybody, for all this, you know, studies and work that's going into our community. I know that everybody's looking to get more affordable housing, for everybody to have more equitable community for everybody. I hope they get fair chance, fair shake. You know, in the wrong lines. I do, however, see that there is still a distinct lack of effort or study put into how all of these additional families and people into our communities is going to affect things like our schools. Our school is at capacity. I know people think that it's decreasing by a hundred kids per year. That was during COVID. That was an other external, you know, effects that were driving changes. And that is over a, we live nearly five thousand students, right? So five thousand five hundred, yeah. Out of a hundred of that many is that a whole lot, right? Our elementary school that my children go to is, has been expanded three times. They just built two, like so many more classrooms to accommodate the increased student load. If we want to build fifty more units, turn single families into multi-families, how many more students can we accommodate in our schools? How many? You always provide that answer. How big will the, the high school need to be? How many more classes do we need? I mean, what teachers will be? How much will that cost? I don't think, I, I, and, you know, you can paint it in a way that you think I'm against affordable housing. I am not. Okay? I didn't grow up with a silver spoon in my mouth. We're working, you know, we're the best family. I worked my way in this community, or at least is to have the student teacher ratios that we have. To have the to give my kids the opportunity and the resources which this community does provide them. We continue to overburden our system with more and more people. It doesn't matter who they are, whether they're wealthy or not. There is only so much space, so much time, so much effort that our schools can provide our, our kids. If you want to turn it into New Yorkville, it's going to put up some high rises. Why not build another high school? Well, we can't because we've got space. Do our kids go out and play in the playground? No, we can't. Because they're playing on concrete. And they use the, the fields for, for Little League or some other sport after three o'clock. I know that the board is trying to prevent Hampshire Country Club from turning their property into developments, correct? Is that correct? Right? Why is that?
The, the, the board is not, what the board is doing is defending the planning board's decision. The board has not had a hand in that.
So that's the planning board. Why are, why are we trying to prevent them from dropping their, their space, right?
Folks, please do not call up the audience.
And so is half of our town. Right? Do we help them? No. We let it flood year after year. I know we have, we have a plan in place now because we've done studies. But the Army Corps of Engineers did their study in two thousand one, was it? They originally did this? Twenty-two years later, we still haven't done anything?
Two thousand seven, if that, what?
Must be looking at a different point, but still it's a very long time. Very long time to have done nothing. I'm just, I'll get to it quick. Just saying. I also don't believe that Hampshire should vote, right? But if they shouldn't, the town shouldn't either. We shouldn't be selling public lands to developers for who knows what profit, right? We're working the zoning, the zoning laws to incorporate, you know, a required number of affordable units. That's great. It does. It provides, you know, a direction for developers that if they want to, they, they must provide extra working to support the housing. That's great. But we still, like we could, we use it for, for refurbishments or, or renovations of existing buildings. But any more units in our district would be disastrous. It would be disastrous. I don't think anybody is really looking at it from an educational point of view. Okay, from community base, fine. But our schools are constantly being overstressed. And I would really like it if somebody from the Board of Education was here to provide their input. So I guarantee you, they would be saying the same thing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, thank you so much for having us today. I'm also from the Marinerak Coalition for Affordable Housing. And I just wanted to respond.
Identify yourself.
Oh, yeah, hi. I just wanted to respond to the previous gentleman's question. I think there's a really helpful Board of Education presentation from March seventh budget meeting. I don't know if you've looked at that, but it, it only talks about school enrollment, but it looks at the number of empty seats.
Do we have to address the board?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So on, on March seventh of this year, as part of the budget presentation, the Board of Education looked at the empty seats in the elementary schools. And so basically, all of the classes are capped at twenty-two students. And so what they do is they make a number of sections based on the current students. And then they say empty seats, have the additional seats that are open because they don't have enough kids to fill that class. So I'm just going to read to you guys the available protected seats according to the Board of Education from this year. So for Central, it is ninety-eight. For Chatsworth, it is fifty-four. For M A S, seventy-seven. And for Murray, it's sixty-two. And the votes, maybe one. So I just wanted to add that perspective to this conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The, the, the lady, did you want to ask a question? Would you come to the mic? No, would you please, people can't hear at home. It's for the folks who are playing along with the home version.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Urban. And I live in the.
At least, the lady's trying to talk.
I'm incorporated town of Marinerak, but I taught in the village of Marinerak, at Marinerak School for many years. So my village is very close to my heart. My question about the making one pass into two is how do you make that unit affordable? My assumption is they're very high in houses, if they're big enough to, because how do you make them affordable? Just, I don't understand.
That's a question the board will, will, will look at. But thank you. I appreciate that. And that's a valid question. He's ready. And please address your comments to the board.
Hi, everyone. My name is Erin Ford. My name is.
Hi, everyone. My name is Abby Roberts. I'm at the thirty-first Road in Marinac. Uh it's great to see all the progress on um the comprehensive plan. And a huge thanks to Neil, by the way. I think he's been hearing from me um since two thousand seventeen. So uh it's it's a good reminder of. The persistence that it takes to get things done sometimes. So um I'm here as a private citizen. But um you know, I think my point of view has been informed by my prior tenure on the traffic commission. Um and as chairman of traffic commission and a couple of years on the zoning board. Um I'm also a parent with two children, one of which is in um Central School. So um I I also wanted to address quickly the school point as well. Um I can only address my own um central school point. But I I do want to say that um as as far as as much as I love um having such a great parent-teacher ratio for my kids. Uh we have a lot of space in Central. It's like a secret gem. I love it. But um you know, from a overarching planning perspective. I don't think it would be fair to say that the school is stretched. So um the the points I wanted to make. Um for the comprehensive plan were two. The first is I just wanted to double down on the importance of walkability. As part of the traffic commission, we did quite a number of walking studies um throughout Marinac, really focusing on the safety of our children. And um safe uh safely to school, but also just the walkability of the community. Um we published a number of studies, uh kind of identifying areas for additional sidewalks and bike routes and so on. So I do want to emphasize that those are in existence and it would be great to see those prioritized through the budget process. So that that gets done um, you know, and is part of our prioritization. I noticed we just, we paved four roads. That's really nice. But um the sidewalks are mostly still not done uh eight years later. So that's one. Um the other point I wanted to make, uh and this goes to the affordable housing point, is that one area that. Um we I kind of thought was missing is it's called the missing middle, right? Um so it's not just affordable housing that's in trouble in Marinac. It's it's middle income housing as well. And Marinac has a really long history of middle-class roots and socioeconomic diversity. And in fact, that's why my husband and I chose to move back here. Um he's third generation of Marinac. And I saw the group of friends, the presence he had growing up here, which was so much more diverse than my own upbringing. And it really mattered to us. And I know it matters to a lot of our neighbors. And we've really seen over the years through the gentrification. How more and more people are getting shut out of our neighborhood um due to the increased costs of um. Of of living here um and gentrification. So um going back to kind of the the point about zoning. Um there is this concept called abzoning, which we talked about. And it's not fancy houses. Um so to answer your question, a lot of these are old. Our house is from eighteen eighty, believe it or not. So it's not about making fancy new homes um into two two families. It's making old homes that can fit two families or three families into two or three families. Um so that more families can live in Marinac. Um it's a strategy that's been up the butt by a number of other cities around here. And I think as um Charles mentioned, you can actually get a lot more homes done more quickly than relying on um extensive development processes. So um that would, those were some of my overarching comments. I think the. The one really big action point is I am hoping that we will update the zoning map based on the top plan. Um our zoning map has not been updated, I believe, since nineteen sixty-eight. I could be wrong about that exact date, but it's been a very, very long time. Which is why the zoning map and our actual zoning is so different from one another. Where you have streets, as Charles was saying, that are um mostly or half non-conforming um. From their past because we haven't updated it for, I'm gonna say like sixty years. So if we can update the zoning map, that will kind of turn this comprehensive plan into reality. Um so that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Good.
Hi, I'm I'm Greg DeAngelis, twelve fifteen, twenty-fourth Avenue. Um I'm an architect in the village, as you know.
I'm bored, dude.
Um and and first of all, actually, what a thank you all for bringing Greg Cutler back into our village. So that's a.
I agree.
And I I think this comprehensive plan, I haven't been to it all, but it's it's amazingly, you know, thorough and thoughtful. And there's really a lot of good stuff that makes sense. Who knows to to Neil and his team. Um just a couple of thoughts. I I'm. You know, first also that we're getting a maker zone in the industrial area. Talk about gems that there's potential there. There's a lot of good businesses and services that exist there. We want to help them continue to thrive, but there are a lot of opportunities for other things as well. Um I like the concept of developing the downtown and the crossover to the riverfront. I think that's something we remember talking about in twenty twelve. Um and just a couple more comments on the uh affordable housing. First of all, I think affordable housing makes a community stronger. It's not just giving, giving opportunities for people to get affordable housing. But I I see, you know, as any organization or companies. Varietyed people that you have, the different spheres that they come from, makes it a stronger community, more people that contribute in different ways. Um and the whole concept of the affordable, I'm sure members of the board will know this, but the the um, you know, accessory going in is. They're not just, they're not always whole families that are going into these. Sometimes it could be a garage that's renovated. It could be a basement with legal exits and and ingress. That can be um, you know, provide an apartment for for a young person getting started, coming back from college, working, working a trade or whatever. Uh provides opportunities for seniors to stay longer because they get rent out of part of their house. So uh I think it is a low hanging fruit. I think it's really um. And I think it it, yes, it has to be looked at. Um schools and and enrollment needs to be looked at, should be. And I know there's studies out there and and how many more cars are getting parked on the street, but that is generally the the trend is people don't need as many cars and they're out of options. So um I I just commend or encourage the board to really seriously consider that. I think it's worthwhile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um you know, I was stuck in traffic and listening to NPR recently. And they had a show on about the brain drain uh from the East Coast to uh, you know, cities in the Midwest. And it was because people graduating uh college, young people graduating college, and they can't afford to live in the cities on the East Coast. So they're going to Kansas City and they're they're going to Shreveport and they're going, you know, to uh places in Ohio. And it because their their talents are so uh commutable now, that they don't have to be in one place. That they could take what they've learned and they could take what they've, you know, uh skills that they've gotten through their education and make it portable. And they could work from anywhere. So they don't have to be in downtown Manhattan. They don't have to be in Boston. They don't have to be in Washington DC. And if we want to keep those folks, you know, the the this isn't just about folks, you know, who are, you know. Like myself, just high school graduates. The the this is uh folks that have college educations that are leaving the community. Because, you know, you you get out of college, the average young person is owing a lot of money. And maybe they get a good job and maybe they're making seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year, and you can't afford to live around here. And I see it with my own children. Uh so when when people talk about, you know, what what's the target area? Target area is everyone, all of us, you know, senior citizens, people graduating college, uh people who work, uh you know, a a a building trade. People who work uh, you know, with their hands and people who also work behind desks every day. But this is something that's affecting every segment of society all throughout, definitely the East Coast. And what, you know, what I've talked to to people, my friends on the West Coast there too. So, you know, it's hard enough to keep families together. Uh but, you know, with the, if if you have children and they can't afford to remain where you are. It it uh, it makes life harder for everybody. Uh so I just wanted to throw that in there. So does anybody else want to comment? Anybody on the board want to comment?
I just said, I mean, I I I read this through, actually read it through. Was delighted by so much of it to see that we're already on the right track in a lot of ways. I was delighted to see uh traffic circles mentioned. Uh and uh whether or not I ever actually have or not. And 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 I remind the public that this is a um a guide. But it's not a, it's not a law and uh it it it's it's intended to be a blueprint for the future, for the the village, the way we imagine it can be as it grows. Because you can either resist growth, well, you could either channel growth and 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 direct it. Or you can resist it and let it direct you. And uh and that's, you know, that's. This is the way to uh to channel it. So uh uh I think it's a wonderful document. And we would be happy to receive uh comments from anybody on what uh is in the say like or don't like uh as we go forward. And I hope that people will read it and come to us uh in subsequent weeks. Anybody else?
Want to go?
No, 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 go, go. I just was, thought the gentleman was coming up. I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, that's what I was saying.
Right, sir.
Uh so regarding turning single family into dual family, noticing a lot of people are moving back to Marinac. A lot of people are selling their homes in uh, I guess, less affordable places, large homes. And they're coming in some American buying up the home too. Um so they're raising their kids in these other other towns. Um going to those schools and then they're coming here and buying these homes. So now families with children that want to buy in here can't. So now our plan is to split these homes. Single family homes into two family homes. Just doesn't make sense to me. Again, Monday Avenue this weekend, two or three times. Couldn't find parking just to run in and grab something. Twenty-five minutes to try to find one. So. And that's just because we're coming from somewhere else. Uh so a lot of times we're forced to just drive home and then walk to the road, which is good. It's fine. But we we're dealing with overcrowding. We're dealing with traffic that is insane. We're dealing with congestion. We still haven't dealt with the flooding. Okay, we're dealing with the flooding, but we're not really dealing with the flood. We want to do, we want to add more congestion. And as far as cars go, we're not getting less cars. People, there are families with four cars, four cars. I've been here a long time. We came up from Queens. If we want to turn Marinac into Queens, you're doing a good job. It's getting overcrowded. There's no parking. You can't, I used, I had a kid, I used to walk down a Marinac Avenue school. It was, it was easy. We had crossing guards at every, every corner. You, I'm I'm afraid to let my kids walk. It is crazy for a lot of reasons. So what are we doing? That's the first major thing. And then the next thing is. There's four smoke shops on the avenue, or potentially four smoke shops. You as the board of trustees and as the mayor, have the ability to shut these places of vices down. They're no good for the community. They do nothing for the community. But we're we're opening them up as convenience stores. So you saw some Pringles, some Bounty tissues, but in the back you got all your bongs and your hookahs and everything else. What is that telling our children? This is all Marinac's about. I'd really like to see what the plan is to clean this area up. Otherwise, we are gonna turn into a city and in the wrong sense. That's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the board? Nor you guys?
No, well, I I actually was gonna follow up on what Charles and Abby both said. And I think that um what they were talking about was a a a couple of neighborhoods or a couple of streets. That were reset, that were two, that are, that are basically two-family neighborhoods that were rezoned in nineteen sixty-eight for single family. And that was aspirational, but it didn't come to fruition. So what they, so what the houses are now are pre-existing non-conforming. And it's hard to alter them or renovate them because they have to be brought up to the single-family standard. But in, but since nineteen sixty-eight, people haven't wanted to build single-family houses in that area. So I think that is the, that's a specific rezoning. It's not wholesale rezoning of neighborhoods that are single-family and full of single-family houses. And I think that, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Matt?
Hmm.
It's fine to address that, that that's common. So I live in a single-family zoned neighborhood. That does have already a lot of two-family houses. They are that way because their grandfather did, okay? It's, you know. Does that mean that we should then make all, like, let all of the other single-family houses become two-family? I I don't think so. Think that the the way it was zoned in nineteen sixty-eight is what their their ambitions were for the town. To to prevent these houses that were illegally subdivided already. From continuing to be so. Because it was, you know, it wasn't essentially a single-family house. It's just that the zoning didn't explicitly forbid it. So then it's now, okay, we got bucks, now a single family. You can't take the the house across the street from me. His grandfather did, it was a two-family house. It has been a three-family house for as long as I have lived there. And they have continued to break the law. For the entirety of the last eight years, nine years now. A new owner recently came to take over that that house and has continued to run it as a three-family house. The previous owner, you know, I I didn't want to make any corals, but there is an older gentleman. Obviously couldn't go anywhere else. He's still there for sixty years. He passed away. He he had a, another old older gentleman that lived with him and rented out rooms or the second floor. Lovely person, lovely individual, no problems. He had nowhere else to go. I wouldn't dare, you know, to make a stink and and have that remedy. So things went on. There is also another middle-aged man that lived in the basement, that illegal apartment basement. Now, it is continued. Now there's cars parking in front of my house like all the time, coming in and out. There's people throwing parties. You know, is is this what we want our single-family house housing to sort to be? Is it, is it to be, you know, there's people coming and going, renting out every single room in their house because nobody's gonna stop them. And now it's a multi-family zone. I don't think that's the direction that we should be going. You know, granted, his grandfather didn't so be it. But it should, it should, it should be. Conforming to that two-family restriction as well, right? And everybody, you know, should be conforming to the, you know, the zoning as it is. We have many houses that don't conform, and I don't think that because they don't conform, that we should then loosen the laws, codes and restrictions. To let them then fall under a a conforming condition. But rather, we should be enforcing our restrictions, our laws, our codes, so that those. Those houses that are running now not compliant are running. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh Neil Desai, uh H I just want to confirm what the comprehensive plan says regarding this and what it doesn't. The comprehensive plan does not make any recommendation that says that uh these uh multi-family or two-family homes should. Or or single-family homes should become two-family or any zoning. It's that we got questions from both perspectives. We have questions saying there's a, there's a bunch of two-family houses in our neighborhood. How how are you gonna stop that? And then there's the other side, which is, how can we have more of that? And so, you know, and that, I think all the arguments are are, you know, for and against are very good. But the comprehensive plan isn't, isn't the place to debate that specific argument. So merely.
It doesn't take a position.
It it doesn't take a position because that would, that would, that would be, that's a very big, a a very big uh uh position to make. So.
It's a legislative question.
Yeah, it's a very question that needs to be examined for all the reasons that people have been talking about affordability, you know, congestion. And so the mere recommend, so in order to kind of address the fact that people are asking a question in terms of from both viewpoints, there is a recommendation. Question in terms of from both viewpoints, there is a recommendation to explore, I mean, it's a very, it's a, I mean, it's a, it's, it's something, but we need to explore. How to, how to treat, you know, how to look at these uh properties into the future. Uh what should happen, and so that's when. The the kind of the the discussion and debate would happen in a, in a, in another process, you know, later on. So the complaint itself doesn't. Make a a a definitive position regarding that. Uh regarding um.
Thank you.
Zoning. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And and I also just wanted to add to that, I think that when, when and if the board does want to pursue exploring that, you could also look in, it it wouldn't be. Essentially, it wouldn't be a wholesale. But you know, item, it might be something that you want to look at specific districts for. So this. It's an order sitting for later.
I do.
There, uh G nine D Martina, seven eighty-two Oldway Plains Road. Also one thirty-four Center Avenue, um I also just, I want to thank Neil for clarifying that and thank you all. For considering the fact that whether whatever you decide on affordable housing or rezoning, that. Like everything else, there is an ebb and flow. It does, like. As you mentioned, Mayor Murphy, people are leaving the community and people will come to the community like they've done for decades and centuries. Um, and so I just want to emphasize that. Um, I think this leadership is considering things from a positive. Perspective and not from fear, and I really appreciate that. Um, there will be communities that come in and there will be communities that leave. Um, Merritt and the Village of Merritt. Uh, and also if we do consider affordable housing, then people wouldn't have to double up so much. Um, so when we're making housing affordable, they're not going to have to live, um, you know, five families in one house or one apartment. Uh, so I just wanted to point that out and really uh. Continue to. Encourage your leadership for thinking of this in a more open-minded reality.
Thank you, Johnny, thank you for your hard work for the village. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we need to, I need to have a motion to.
Abby, did you have one more thing?
Yeah, I'll just, if I could just respond to this.
All right, so we're we're not a debate though, we're just one lifetime, yeah.
Johnny, of course, um. I I do just want to make the point like um Laura was also saying that we're not saying. All everything should be rezoned. Um, we're talking about various streets where half the streets are already. Figuratively. Multi-family, and what I want to think of, I've heard this multiple times from owners of single families in those areas is. Well, what, you know, well, that's gonna take away the value of your home, actually, it's the opposite. Um, what we found is we can't sell our single family home. On those streets, right, because it's all multi-family, so I just want to make the point very directly. To everyone who's thinking about this, that the ship has kind of sailed for these streets that we're talking about. And all of those people who are worried about the values of their single family homes. Um, that's kind of sailed too, and if if that's really what you care about, then. You should really be kind of more embracing. The reality, the facts on the ground versus um. Kind of wishing for something that's, you know, never gonna go back, you know? The the egg is cracked, the cookie's crumbled, however you want to put it, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh. Like the entertaining motion to refer this to the Harbor Coast Zone Management Commission. So moved.
Second.
Hold role, please.
Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this uh hearing until the twenty-sixth. Of uh June. I I'll make that motion, but I I want to let people know that I don't think that's gonna be the end of it, I think we'll probably keep it open after the twenty-sixth of June into July. Uh, just to give people a chance to uh, there's a lot there, right, it's two hundred pages, and there's a lot for people to digest. So give people a chance to really get to know it. And if they have any more questions or concerns, this is a big step, something that happens, you know, maybe every ten or twenty years. So uh, we want to make sure it's thorough.
And it and it's and it's a guide, so if you have alternative wording you'd like to work into the plan, bring it on in.
Yep. Okay, so I'll make the motion to adjourn this hearing until uh June twenty-sixth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Let's get to some of the agenda.
Okay. Did you just vote?
No, 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 just the public hearing for.
Is that what you were here for? Good to see you.
Bye bye.
Island, island lady.
Where is she? Okay, file file up quietly, please. Uh, first item is two A. Is authorization to execute budget transfers over budget expenses, uh the budget uh. Items that it's. A budget lines it's coming from and going to are delineated in our uh. In our. Resolution, anybody have any questions or concerns? Need a motion?
All right. Move to.
Some moves. Sorry.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, tonight we have a beginning of a fiscal year, so we have two sets of abstracts. We have abstracts from the year uh. Twenty twenty-three and from the budget year twenty twenty-four, which we are just starting. Tonight. We just started in June. So the first abstract from the budget year uh ending five thirty-one twenty-three is one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and. No, oh, right, you you gave it my 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 bed. Is one million six hundred and thirty-two dollars, nine hundred. What number, let me do this again, one million. Six hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, any questions or concerns?
No.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Oh, um, wait, 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 wait.
No, no, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is two C, resolution of abstract ordered vouchers for this fiscal year. That we just started on June first. This is, what is the hefty one? Three million six hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Questions or concerns?
Um, a lot of insurance here, right?
Yes, there's workers' compensation uh bill is one million dollars. Uh, there's a hospital medical insurance, it's another one million dollars. This is, you know, a large charges that don't recur every uh order.
Million here, million there.
Well, you know, you're talking real money.
There you go.
Uh. Questions, concerns?
No.
New motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, signed, sealed and delivered. I'll give these to Jerry, please. Um. The next up, old business, there's none. New business comments limited for three minutes, resolution authorizing street closure for the June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three Fireman's Parade. So the Fireman's Parade, June twenty-eighth, please come down. Uh, and this is just the resolution uh closing the street at that time.
I I didn't know the last sentence, this is G Wednesday, June. Yeah, that's five years from now.
Yeah, you're right.
Can we get that changed?
Yeah, we might want to update this, uh June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Good catch. Would like to make a motion, Manny?
So.
I'll second. All in favor?
All right.
Uh, resolution authorizing garden at Harbor Island accepting.
Holding it.
We're we're holding it.
We need documentation on it.
Yeah, we're holding it. That was wishful thinking. Uh, resolution adopting standard workday and retirement reporting resolution, uh. This. Gives a sense of the hours that the elected officials are working.
Not really.
Grossly underestimates.
Here's a formula.
There's a formula, yeah, I know.
Why, why? It's what they think.
It says I'm working fourteen hours every two weeks. I have days. They're fourteen-hour days.
Fourteen hours by Tuesday morning.
Uh, anyway, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Resolution authorizing the serving of alcohol at the Coast Guard Auxiliary Event at Harbor Island Park, uh this is July fourth. Uh, the Coast Guard has a little get-together with the blessing of the fleet. And they have maybe a couple bottles of wine. Uh, and just as. So folks know, anytime serving alcohol in Harbor Island Park requires the permission of the board of trustees. So I'll make the motion, second. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, and the resolution authorizing a serving of alcohol, the tiki party, which is a party that is thrown by LMC. Which they'll be more imbibing. Than at the Coast Guard party. Because uh they they they're a fun-loving crowd, and it's always a fun party. Xavier, you have a good time at the party? Yeah, Xavier is our LMCTB man, he. He films it and has a good time, uh, I'll make that resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution scheduling a public hear. Oh, pardon me. Resolution scheduling a public hearing, P L P twenty twenty-three land use board procedures. Uh, what this is, is the uh, it has to do with the noticing of uh. Public hearings, or if you're you're getting work done at your house, uh it it was a hodgepodge of different uh. Distances, and we are bringing it down to two hundred feet, but the signage has to still remain, you have to still have a sign on your property. Mr. Spalzino, would you like to ludicrous?
That's that's correct. What this does is bring together in one place. The notice requirements to neighbors and to work. Uh, regarding applications for land use. Land use board of groupers. Right now, there's a separate notice section for each board, planning board, the zoning board, each type of rule, there are variants. For site plan approval or subdivision approval. We we're trying to coordinate and. Simplify procedure. Without changing any of the substance and without changing. That without cutting anybody out of the notice process. Uh, by having one place where this procedure. Is located. Uh, so that's what this this law does, it consolidates. Four or five different notice procedures into one notice.
Beautiful. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this was scheduled, the public hearing for. June twenty-sixth.
Well, there, you may want to think about. Sending this uh scheduling a public hearing far enough out. That the land use boards can comment in advance of the public hearing.
I thought they had commented on.
Only one board, I think the zoning board took it up, I think. Mr. Coming to the zoning board.
We have, we have provided. Copies of the law to the. Land use boards already. Uh, the zoning board did meet before this meeting and provide their comments. Um, and uh. I don't believe we received any comments from. H C Z M or planning board.
Okay.
They meet, planning meets this week and H C Z N meets the following week, so.
Okay. They they have time.
In the twenty-sixth, it's gonna be in that one.
Okay, so. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustees, Rollings?
Yes.
You guys are read?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas? Yes, Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, resolution authorizing dates and street closure uh for the summer on the Avenue Block Party. And uh. Say it's gonna be a fun block party, and the date of the street closure is July twenty-sixth, and if it's a rain date, July twenty-seventh. I'll make that motion, second. I'm sorry, no, you want to say?
I just hope it doesn't rain.
Yeah, I hope it doesn't rain.
With that, it just is.
I do remember that twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen date.
Jerry, I think a rain date is a very good idea.
Downboard.
All right, so I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
All right. That was a crazy day.
Resolution authorizing funding for Columbia Firehouse renovations, Jerry, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Uh, Mayor, this is trying to save some additional damage. That the weather um is uh causing havoc at the Columbia Firehouse. Uh, this is extensive window, lento and other rehabilitation. For approximately seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we've added to the resolution. Um, a ten percent contingency on that. We have old buildings and they need to be refurbished.
Yep.
We just finished. Two thirty-four Stanley, we are. Working from issue to issue in this building and. Now Columbia. Has to be um. Has to be addressed.
Any questions or concerns? Need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Hold the roll.
That's these Rollings? You guys are read?
What are we on?
Page.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas? Yes, Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh. Resolution warning contract for twenty twenty-three oh one, the C D G B and drainage repair, this is the uh. The repairs over on Ralph. That we talked about before. Okay, and by having questions or concerns? Okay, we we we're putting up two hundred and seventy-five thousand, the county's putting up two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we're hoping to get the remainder from FEMA, is that right, Jerry?
We will get the remainder.
We will get the remainder.
We have all the documentation.
I like that.
Yep.
Other than we want it now.
That we can't do.
Okay. I I need a motion.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, uh, resolution. It's interesting, when I say all in favor, you will say aye, and when you vote, you will say yes.
I know, and you say aye.
Yeah.
Yes.
Resolution authorizing funding uh of invoice to pay for subsurface soil and foundation investigations. Associated with the reconstruction of Paul Street Avenue, we talked about this in the work session before, Paul Street Avenue. Uh, is built upon old trolley tracks that were never removed. Uh. And it causes the roadway to sag, it causes it to get potholes, it causes it sometimes to get enormous potholes. Uh, we just gave it a a surface paving so it'd be drivable, but it really needs, you know, it's it's probably been. Since the forties, they took out the trolley and paved over it, and uh. It was the wrong thing to do back then, and uh, you know, a lot of times in this community, we kicked the can down the road, and uh. It's sometimes left up to this board to be at the end of the road and to actually fix the thing the way it should have been fixed, you know, probably at the end of World War Two. Um. So that being said, this is a study to pay for the investigation of that, and I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Agree.
Resolution authorizing payment to AKRF Ralph and Gertrude Avenue Drainage Improvements.
We're holding this.
We're holding this, okay. Uh, next up is uh for L, resolution establishing affordable housing ad hoc task force. Now, I we we talked about this in a. Work session before, and I I'm not against the idea of having a task force, but I was thinking we should have a task force. You know, to to like, they were talking about before, is to maintain affordabilities and to help people with landlord and tenant problems. That's what I thought this was originally gonna be. You know, I I think if we're gonna have a task force. To do an affordability plan, we have to come up with, you know, at least the outline of the plan ourselves. And what we want to see and, you know, what we want to uh have come out of that. So I think it's premature for that, but I.
And we could just expand what we want for the scope of the committee.
I I I I think that's a lot to ask for a committee that, you know, we we we're doing this on the fly.
And I actually don't think it's a lot to, I mean, I think it's, I think. I don't think it's a lot to ask of a committee, um and I say that because there are a lot of communities that have done it that way, and I think you need a group of people to work on it. Um, I think it's, you know, maybe it could be. Two, we could break into a subcommittee, but we can't work in pairs, we we can work in pairs, we can't work in threes because it violates the open meetings law, so. Um, the odds of us actually drafting this report, I think, are minimal. If we are doing it ourselves, so that's why I think working, you know, having a group that's dedicated to it would be great, I'm happy to work on it with another trustee to work. If we are doing it ourselves, so that's why I think working, you know, having a group that's dedicated to it would be great, I'm happy to work on it with another trustee to work, flesh out the bones of it. But um, you know, we, we really can't work as a group of three or four or five. Unless we're in a public.
Well, I.
We must be focused.
Uh, but I, I think. What I'm talking about is using our professional staff to at least come up with, you know, the outline of a plan and then having, you know, talking about it as a board. And then seeing if we need outside help.
Work on an outline of it with Greg, I'm happy to do that. For Greg, can we keep volunteering him when he's not in the room?
Left, yeah, but don't leave the room, you're gonna get a better job. Well.
What do you guys wanna do here? I, I, I think, I think we need to.
I will work on.
Reacquire the target.
I will work on an outline that's.
Why, why don't we work on the resolution? I don't, I agree, because you just, you know, we, 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 we. We're forming a board without a mission.
Yeah, I got, I got a feeling we're gonna, we're gonna form a task force and ask them what they'd like to do.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think we need to probably.
I just thought I would do that.
All right, so you wanna hold this?
Great idea, though.
We'll hold it for two weeks and.
We, we, we're gonna have to renotice, you're gonna come up with a new thing.
Eventually, we're gonna have to have a discussion about it, so, and it's gonna be us.
Resolution uh, four M, resolution authorizing no turn at Fenimore and Boston Post Road. Uh, this was something that we talked about, oh, thank you. This is something that we talked about uh, in work session and it was uh, something that Ms. Short uh, talked about uh, before. Uh, you know, because, you know, and, and I had a, a couple come to uh. My office hours. Uh, who live on Fenimore. Uh, and, and they've lived there a long time and they talked about this too, and then soon after uh, that uh. Young, young gentleman and his mom got hit by the car. And thankfully, they're on the road to recovery, but uh, you know. It's time to do something about this. Uh, so this resolution would be a no turn on red on Fenimore and Boston Post Road. That in itself will make that crossing safer, but what that allows us to do also, it allows us to go to the state and have the state uh. Do more intervention on that crossing.
So this is something we can do and, and then we ask the state for, for more.
Right, but, but the state predicates their action on us doing this. So I'd, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kick out of the eyes. Resolution recognizing Joe Liberty on the occasion of his being honored by the legal voters. Uh, I wasn't here for this, but I, I'm, I'm all in favor of honoring Mr. Liberty, he does great work. So this is a resolution by the Board of Trustees. Talking about the great service that Mr. Liberty has done both to the community. Uh, and to the school, you know, and just. On the, on the ballot this year is going to be uh. An initiative that Mr. Liberty's class uh, presented to the Board of Trustees about uh, moving the elections. To even numbered years. And I was told today that the New York State Legislature. Has passed the law. That all town elections and all county elections will now happen on even numbered years. So if we stayed in the odd numbered years, we will be the only people on the ballot. So it, it kind of, it gives a different perspective to uh, what trustee Young brought to the board via the uh, young folks at Okra.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it, it's, it's the way the wind's blowing.
They also, his, 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 uh, one of his cohort students did a lot of research for the community. In regards to right to, rights to council.
That's right.
And Westchester County approved that, so.
Yes, it, it really made a difference. So um.
Not saying they were like the main factor for that, but it, the, the topics.
Yeah, I, I, I spoke at his class. Uh, at seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And uh, it, it's, it's so hilarious to watch the young people get dropped off by their parents at seven o'clock in the morning. Like, some of these boys are like pretty much falling out of the car, right? And then to have to speak to them. And then, you know, my kids, my kids don't listen to me at seven o'clock in the morning, my kids don't listen to me at eight o'clock, and when these poor kids like, oh god, this guy's got a drone on. I tried to keep, I tried to keep it short.
Uh, so anyway, um, uh, somebody's gotta be, I think, do we have to deliver this thing?
Well, is it gonna be in the form of like a proclamation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Proclamation, so, so um.
Do we ask for that?
It's on Thursday.
Yeah.
Is this Thursday?
Would you like?
I'm going.
Oh, then, yeah, there you go.
Okay, I can't, I can't go, so.
I'm going.
Okay, Sally, could we get the proclamation to Lilani?
Dan, can we get the proclamation? Yes.
Yeah.
We'll get it.
Of course. Thursday, that's an eternity for us.
Might need to edit out uh, one or two harass clauses to make it fit, but.
Am I the only one going? Okay.
Nora, were you?
I don't think I'm going, I have something else, so I don't know. I have another meeting that night.
It's a, it's like.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock and it's over at Anderson.
Anderson bookstore.
That's all.
All right.
Not that I don't mind.
All right, thank you, Mr. Liberty. Uh. Last chance to address the board. Very time.
No, he said time, Jerry.
Jerry time.
Robert Stark, seven oh four, on that court, um. At the work session, somebody brought up Evelyn Wood, district of uh. Curacity, I took the other one with force and assistance. Uh, I would say in theory, it's great theory, practice, don't waste your money. Um. The uh, when Mr. Desai spoke about affordable housing, I thought he used the term. And recommended an affordable housing committee. So maybe the, the problem is. Committee versus task force. He recommended it, maybe it's up for you to consider, he thought it was a good idea for. Um, the other thing I wanna talk about is um. Gotta talk about the traffic commission, this, these are my opinions. I'm, I'm happy that you're going to address the traffic issues that were on your agenda, I just, I was. Upset that. More time was spent on something that I didn't think was relatively important. Specifically um. Medicare for all. I thought it was more important to talk about and deal with your traffic issues, I thought that dealt with. Real needs of the people as a member of the traffic commission, Lewis at our meetings, Larry's at our meetings. You know, there are people who come to our meetings have genuine. Safety issues, whether it's pedestrians or traffic. And when they come to our committee and make recommendations, hopefully that they're addressed sooner rather than later. Just constructive criticism.
I'd like, I'd just like to point out that everything that was on is now going to be voted on at the next works, at the next regular meeting. So we did address it.
But so.
It should, it should. It should have been addressed at the last. Meeting. The id, the idea that you didn't have time. I don't go for that.
Thank you.
Hey, um, I'm gonna say this. It was an oversight, if I didn't advocate on the behalf of the traffic committee for this particular week. Then that would be an oversight on me and I'll take that ownership, um, but. These things do happen and I apologize if I did make that oversight on the behalf of the traffic committee as your liaison.
Okay, uh. And, and they're all gonna get addressed. There were no, there were no qualms. Uh, report from the village manager, we did extensively, report from the clerk treasurer. Hi, Ogie.
Good evening, Mayor, yes, uh, the first item is renewal of G P and G P C permits. They expire June first, we're giving you grace period until June fourteenth. The second item is the second, the first half village property tax payments are due. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Ogie. I report from village attorney.
Mayor Local Law seven of twenty twenty three. Which was the local law regarding the dog park and actuating establishing regarding the military manager. Who established rules for the dog park.
Right.
Was filed in the Secretary of State and became effective on May fifteen, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, and I just wanna thank the park staff and rec staff for the amazing sign that they erected.
That's cool.
At the Bonfok, they really did an excellent job. It's, it's amazing what these folks can do when you give them a chance to uh, use their own initiative. Uh, minutes boards committees. Uh, minutes of Board of Trustees work session, regular meeting of May twenty second and special meeting of May thirty first, twenty twenty three. Minutes of Harbor Coast Zone Management Commission meeting of March thirteenth. April third, April eleventh and April nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Minutes of the planning board meeting of May tenth, twenty twenty three. Minutes of the Board of Architecture Review of uh, April twentieth, twenty twenty three and minutes of the Arts Council of May tenth, twenty twenty three. Uh. Greatfully entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, yes.
Yes.